Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of February 16th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we do have a new face here. We have our new clerk. So, her first meeting, I would like to request that she read, call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Howard DeShalt.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Kuchy.
Here.
Councilmember Mandanza.
Here.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Thank you, yes. And I'd like to ask that you please read, announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you very much. So, good evening and welcome, everyone, to tonight's City Council meeting. If you have not already picked up your agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table, just right outside of the chambers. If you're here to speak on an issue not on the agenda, you may do so under public comment. There is a 25-minute allocation for public comment tonight with a three-minute time limit for each speaker. As a reminder, the Brown Act does not permit the City Council to take action on an issue that is not listed on tonight's agenda. If you wish to speak on an item that is on the agenda, you must state, you must, you will have a five-minute limit. Speakers may address the City Council at the podium. The limit will be monitored. When the light on the podium blinks red, please be advised that you will be asked to continue and conclude your comments swiftly. If you do not address the council tonight, if you do address the council tonight, we would appreciate that your name be recorded, and we really appreciate your time here.
Thank you. And I almost forgot our Pledge of Allegiance, so, we can't do that. I would like to ask Emily Isom, she's a senior at Roseville High School, if she would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Emily. We'll move on to public comment. Now is the time for anyone to come forward and speak to any item that is not on the agenda. We do have a couple cards, but you're welcome to come forward. Yep, go for it.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and council members. My name is Kevin Lechance, and I'm the Vice President of Roseville Heights Neighborhood Association. I'm also the President of Arcona. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Roseville Heights and the adjacent Los Cerritos Neighborhood Association to address the future of Weber Park, established 85 years ago in 1937. Weber Park is Roseville's third oldest, and it serves two of Roseville's most historic neighborhoods. It is the sole open green space within these neighborhoods. A small park at 1.9 acres, Weber Park is located in Roseville's core neighborhoods, fronting both Main Street and Circuit Drive, sharing a border with multiple residences on its east and west sides. Due to multiple factors, Weber Park has struggled to function as a family-friendly neighborhood park, where primary concerns among residents include safety, cleanliness, and usability. A clean, safe park is fundamental to the health and well-being of a growing number of families that make up the surrounding community. Over, over the past several years, residents from neighborhoods have worked collaboratively with the city of Roseville, the Health Education Council, and the Invest Health, and multiple local partners to establish Weber Park so that it functions as originally intended. Surveys show that the neighborhood residents overwhelmingly support the restructuring of Weber Park to increase its safety, accessibility, and utility. For example, leveling the terrain on the Main Street side to enable visibility and ease of patrolling by police, bringing the park to ADA compliance, and updating its facilities and amenities. Park improvements repeatedly requested by the residents and identified as barriers to the safe utilization require considerable resources, some of which could stem from one-time funding opportunities. We understand that the taxes earmarked for essential services through Measure B had strong residents' support, especially for the purposes of Parks and Recreation Department, whose services benefit many. Therefore, we respectfully request that you take into account Weber Park's longstanding needs as you consider how to allocate Measure B funding, infrastructure, ARPA funds, and those allocated to important upgrades such as to Johnson Pool. Roseville, Heights, and Los Cerritos have recently created the Weber Park Subcommittee between our two neighborhoods, and its members are eager to work with the city of Roseville and our partners to find funding and design solutions that allow Weber Park to succeed and flourish. We have sent an email to each of the council members containing tonight's statement and a request for funding, along with contact information for each of the members of the Neighborhood Subcommittee, which includes the presidents of both neighborhood associations. In summary, we request the continued city engagement to work with us to find solutions to the transformation of Weber Park, just like the numerous successful parks throughout Roseville, where residents feel safe and where a variety of healthy activities are possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Next, we do have Mr. Peter, and I hope I get the name right. Frederick, Frederick, thank you.
It has now been over three months since the city of Roseville platformed and praised the HSS, which is the international wing of India's deeply controversial RSS paramilitary. That's certainly enough time for this council to have sought and found answers to the only questions which matter. What is the HSS? What is the RSS? And are or are they not connected to each other? Those with any spark of curiosity and the ability to perform a two-second internet search can find the Wikipedia entry describing HSS as a sister organization of the RSS. Another two seconds to click through to the entry on the RSS itself reveals that it is described as an Indian right-wing Hindu nationalist paramilitary. But, as we all know, anyone can say anything on Wikipedia, right? Instead, let's look to the local HSS branch here in the Sacramento region, the very same group promoted by the city of Roseville. Here, we see photos from 2013, 2015, and 2021, in which the HSS in Sacramento, just like the HSS in most of the rest of the world, is displaying photos of the first two chiefs of the RSS, the parent organization. Pay particular attention to this guy, Amos Gulvarcar, who not only headed the RSS for 33 years, but also penned the ideological hate speech, which resulted in that paramilitary being accurately described as Nazi-inspired. Now, note that I'm quoting Gulvarcar disparagingly. I do not endorse these sentiments, but this is what he said. He said that Indian Muslims and Christians are foreign elements, internal threats, and traitors, who have joined the camp of the enemy, and whose patriotism to India is in doubt simply because they are not Hindu. Writing at the dawn of the Second World War, he pointed to Mussolini's Italy and Hitler's Germany as living justifications for his own desire to exterminate Indian minorities. He demanded that India should be turned into a theocratic Hindu state, and insisted that non-Hindus living in India should be stripped of citizenship rights. He said way too many hateful things to recount here right now, but the most shocking of them all was when he praised the Nazi treatment of the Jews as a model for the RSS to follow in India. I quote him, "To keep up the purity of the race and its culture, Germany shocked the world by her purging the country of the Semitic races, the Jews. Race pride at its highest has been manifested here." In his twisted and evil thinking, the Holocaust proved that multiculturalism is impossible, and that the RSS's goal of cleansing India of all non-Hindus is justified. In his words, "The Holocaust was a good lesson for us to learn and profit by." So said the guy who serves as the inspirational spirit of the HSS, the group that this City Council platformed and praised just three months ago. When Roseville applauded the HSS, did the city intend to endorse that group's glorification of an admirer of Nazi genocide? Do you care now to reconsider your embrace of the HSS? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Cheryl Charleston, who would like to talk about walkways and bikeways from the Civic Center to the Church Street, so come on up, please.
Good evening. Hi. I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to speak. I used one, I came about six months ago and mentioned about the, about how dangerous it is for the bikes to be running, riding on the same walkway as the pathway, and I just, I understood that there's really no way you can stop them from riding the bikes, and, but as I continue that walkway almost every day going home, I, I realized that it's gonna, it's extremely dangerous, and, and somebody is gonna get hurt the way the bikes, they go down, at least sometimes, from the Vernon Street down the hill, and as you're walking down the walkway with the noise of the traffic, you, you would, they never really even say if they're on your right or their left, but you wouldn't hear them anyway, and if you were to deviate, to go to the side, they could hit you. I've almost been hit a couple times, and, and, I mean, it's not like a little bump, and I just don't know. I mentioned during the time that I was here, the last time, if maybe do something similar to, like, they have the walkway on the, on the, on the bike path, and have one side for the walkers and one side for the bike riders, so that way the walkers would at least know to stay on their side, and the bikes hopefully would stay on their side, because you're really not gonna stop the people from riding the bikes. I, I mentioned the sign, and they ride right past the sign, you know, and, so I know that's gonna be something that's gonna be hard to even, any kind of manage, but maybe just asking if there's a way that we could, and I know it costs money, and I know there's, I don't know how about they would go about doing it, but to have one side for the walkers and one side for the bike riders, because it is very dangerous, and, and I'm really afraid someone's gonna get hurt. You know, I do, I, I do pray about it, because I do feel that, as dangerous it is, it seems kind of maybe minimal until you walk it every day, and you, you have a bike, you know, brush past you, and, and if it hits you, it would, it would very much could hurt you. And it's not only me, it's everybody else that uses that bike way, and that walkway. So, I want to thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Mr. Kevin Lechance.
He spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address any item that's not on the agenda? I know we have a few other cards, but that's for an agenda item. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to item, to our consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, all matters on consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion of consent items unless a member of the City Council staff or the public requests a specific item to be removed and pulled for discussion. Does anyone have a, an item to be pulled, any member of the public?
Move consent.
Second. Thank you. The item has been moved and seconded. With that, we'll do a roll call, Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Halde, I'm sorry, councilmember, sorry.
You're right.
Vice Mayor Halde Shalt?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchy?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes, thank you. We don't have the easiest names up here. You're doing great. All right, we will move on to item 7.1, City Neighborhood Identification Sign Policy and Program. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the council. My name is Jason Sheikowski, and I'm your Public Works Director. Joining me is Brian Jacobson, your Citywide Public Information Officer, and tonight, we're bringing forward a proposed new Neighborhood Identification Sign Policy for your consideration and approval. The goals of the sign policy are to reinforce the sense of identity and pride within neighborhoods, and to raise awareness of neighborhood associations within Roseville. This proposed policy was developed in collaboration with Public Works, Development Services, the City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office, Public Affairs and Communications, and in partnership with Arcona, the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. The policy includes strict design guidelines to create uniformity of the program across the city and reduce the cost of the program. Some of the requirements include that the signs will be a standard 18-inch by 24-inch, single-sided street-name sign. They will have a uniform look and feel consisting with existing city practices. They will be fabricated to city and Caltrans standards, and the policy allows for the placement of neighborhood identification, identification signs at selected entry points to established and Arcona-recognized neighborhoods. And, based upon the anticipated level of interest, the cost of the program can be absorbed by the existing Public Works budget. In addition, the signs are allowed to be installed along the perimeter of a neighborhood at significant entry points with a limit of eight signs per neighborhood. The signs will be installed on existing sign poles or streetlight poles, and the number and placement of signs will be determined in consultation with the neighborhood association, but the city reserves the right to make the final determination. The signs will be installed as Public Works crew schedules allow. So, Brian now is gonna talk a little bit about the design of the sign faces.
Good afternoon, or, good evening. So, here are three examples of some draft sign designs. The signs will have a uniform look, as Jason said, so there will not be three different colors. These are three different color examples that we could choose from. They would have the uniform look so they'd be readily identified as neighborhood identification signs, no matter where you are in the city, and the simple design makes them easy to read as you quickly drive past. Each would include the words "Welcome to" with the neighborhood association name, and then a neighborhood association below. We can mimic the typeface from specific associations, the ones that they are using in, in their logos, as you see here in Cherry Glen and Historic Sierra Vista, and we can also mimic an emblem such as the cherries or the mountains that they may be using as well. If the association does not have a usable or distinctive typeface, we would use the typeface you see here on the Blue Oaks Neighborhood Association example. This is not to say the Blue Oaks does not have a, a recognizable typeface, we just use those as an example here. And we will consult with the neighborhood association on the best emblem to use with the sign, and the design and development of these is happening through my office in Public Affairs and Communications.
So, in summary, staff is requesting that council approve the Neighborhood Identification Sign Policy, and Brian and I are available to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Does the council have any questions of staff before we open it up to public comment?
I have, I have one. The review process, is that going before the Design Review Committee, or is it going internally, just through staff?
Just through staff at this point.
Thank you.
And on the, the sign identifications, they're talking about historic areas that don't have signs, which I think is really nice, because you, you know where West Park or Stone Ridge is, but you don't know what Cherry Glen is, or some of the areas that are really unique, they just don't know their name. So, I, I think, I think that's good. I think after the discussion, I just want to make sure that if there's others, that we have historic areas that don't have a name that we know of. It's nice for people to know, you know, when they were looking up our history, or, or what is this area called, or not even, I've had people come up here, and I remember someone from Cherry Glen coming up, and I knew where it was, but it was really nice, we saw it on a map, but if you were driving by, this would be nice.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Scott.
I just had a question on the color. Could you explain, there's gonna be one color everywhere, or the neighborhoods can kind of pick the color that matches?
There will be one color everywhere. I listed three different examples of, of the colors we're thinking about, but they would be similar across the city.
Is there, I don't know if the neighborhoods want this or not, but would there be a challenge to have, let them pick the color for their neighborhood, or?
Well, I think the idea from, from our perspective is to have them readily identifiable as a neighborhood association sign or a neighborhood sign, so if they were different colors, that might hamper that.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, I think, you know, anything that brings our city together, from Fittiaman Farms to Folsom Road Associations, good, and creates a sense of identity in our city of 145,000 folks. As I look at the Neighborhood Identification Sign Program, it says it's recognized an active neighborhood association, so these signs would not be in place where there's not an active neighborhood association?
Well, as the process is designed now, you would take an active neighborhood with a board to then ask for the signs, have it approved by the Arcona Executive Board, and then come to the city. Obviously, an inactive neighborhood association doesn't have a board, so the process doesn't allow for that.
Yeah. So, an inactive neighborhood association doesn't mean an inactive neighborhood. There could be camaraderie within, you know, those neighborhoods, right, whether it's, you know, in our core neighborhoods. So, I'm wondering why the program doesn't include some of our core neighborhoods, our historic, the fact, the areas that actually found that many of the families came to Roseville and have since moved to other neighborhoods within Roseville, but their lives and their families and their businesses started in some of those neighborhoods. So, why, why, why are those neighborhoods left out of this program?
As we developed the program, the idea was to make it manageable and consistent, and it seemed best to work through the neighborhood associations and Arcona to do that. Certainly, we can amend and adjust to allow the inactive neighborhood associations to get signage as well. I don't think that would be that difficult to do, but the idea behind using the neighborhood associations as the reference points for these signs was to make it, the process, like I said, manageable and consistent throughout the city.
So, that leads to my next question. I live in Highland Reserve. There's, you know, there's monument signs in Highland Reserve that delineate those on major arterials. Solair has signage out in, in west, out west. Does this, how does this integrate with that, and how's it create a uniformity and consistency amongst signages and amongst the city of Roseville?
The genesis of this came from some of the older neighborhoods wanting monument signs similar to what you're speaking of. We, there were issues with that in finding the proper space for something like that in the older neighborhoods, purchasing the monument, and then maintaining the monument. So, as we talked through, what else could we do, we landed on this particular program, because we weren't able to do the monument signs, as, as you said as an example in other parts of the city. So, these signs would hopefully provide that consistency around the city. We're not gonna be able to build those large monument signs in some of the older areas of town, so that we wouldn't be able to do, but these signs could be available in those other neighborhoods if they so requested.
And so, along Vernon Street and Riverside, there are, there's a branding that goes along in those areas and signage there. How would that, how would the consensus, consistency of branding and the identity of one Roseville kind of, how do you envision that happening?
Well, the consistency of the design of the signs for these neighborhood associations would, would hopefully provide that consistency. These signs would not necessarily be next to some of those signs that you're referencing, they can be in other areas, so you wouldn't see a, a confusion between those two, but hopefully the design as, as we envision it will provide that consistency.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I'm gonna take off on the same thing. That was kind of where I was going on the same thing, Councilman Halde Shalt. I'm, I, I think the concept is good. I'm looking for unity of, of all of Roseville, the new Roseville, the historic Roseville, the future Roseville, all Roseville, and so, I, I like the idea of like the welcome, I'm just looking at my welcome to Cherry Glen neighborhood, and so that it reflects an area, a location, you know, not particularly an organization, and I, and, and some of those areas that, you know, aren't in the association, maybe someday they will be, but I think I'm looking for making sure locations and helping tie our community together. Even the ones that don't, you know, aren't, they're, you know, we'll probably look at a list of how many, how many areas do we have, and so that we make sure that we're, that it makes, we're doing it logically, but I would want to make sure that everybody's included.
As I said-
There may not be that many, you know, that aren't, but I, and, and a lot of times, even if there was an association that's real active and one's not, sometimes they merge, and that's great. I think that's good, but I'm, I'm looking for my, the neighborhoods, and that we have historic neighborhoods in Roseville.
So, neighborhoods then wouldn't necessarily be the same name as the neighborhood association? Is that what you're?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm going at.
We can certainly look into that. Part of the reason, as I mentioned before, of doing it this way was to have a consistent way to handle this process. The neighborhood associations have an elected board, selected by their neighbors. A, a unrecognized neighborhood, neighborhood does not have that same mechanism to work through, so that's one of the reasons why we decided to go this way, or, or suggesting we, we go this way. Not to say we can't augment to include something like that, but the process would have to be different, and we'd have to give some thought as to, who would bring that forward? How would that work? One neighbor may like it, and one neighbor, neighbor may not. Where are the boundaries of some of these neighborhoods? So, those are some of the things we'd have to think about to go beyond the scope of what we're proposing tonight.
Wouldn't that, aren't you, would be doing the same thing, that if you were in a, put a sign up and it's a neighborhood association, and somebody didn't like it because they didn't- didn't like it? You know, I mean, the same, what guarantee that, I'm not being argumentative, I'm just saying, you know, I think, because I like the sign ideas. And I remember the lady who came and brought it up about her historic area, except I didn't know where to put the sign. But I really give you a lot of credit for that thought, but it's because it was a location. And I think we have some really cool places in Roseville, and I think the neighborhood associations for bringing that kind of concept, but I want to keep, I want to keep it as a whole city.
Let me-
Yeah, I'm done.
So let me piggyback on that and give you an example. So many, many, many years ago, I was the president of Kirby Ranch Neighborhood Association. Kirby Ranch runs from Old Auburn, Lund Drive, all the way to Kirby, right on the other side of Oakmont. It runs north, north, north-south, and a little bit east. Within that, that whole development is known as Kirby Ranch. But the way that Arcona has sectioned it up, and that's because of size, and because of the various phases of the newer homes versus the older homes within that particular development, we have a South Kirby Ranch Neighborhood Association, we have a Kirby Ranch Neighborhood Association. Now, when I read what was presented, and kind of piggybacking on what Councilwoman Rukucci said, that wouldn't, we shouldn't be putting a sign that says "South Kirby Ranch," because technically, that would be inaccurate. That entire community is Kirby Ranch, just like Johnson Ranch is Johnson Ranch, Maidu is Maidu, Cherry Glen, I mean, I can, we may have subsets, and I can think of a couple, but Kirby Ranch is the one that comes to mind, because that seems to be the larger one in some of our older neighborhoods, where they actually split it in two, but technically, it's one development. So if you're looking at it on a map, and one of the examples is, and talking to some people from Arcona and discussing this with neighborhood associations, easier to find, being able to find it through GPS, you know, more of a locale and identity. But if you're doing that, you would find Kirby Ranch, you wouldn't necessarily find South Kirby, because we don't have a North Kirby. It's just Kirby Ranch, and it becomes South Kirby, which goes all the way to the county line, which would be over there on Old Auburn Road. So in that particular instance, what would we do for a sign, and what would that look like? Because that would be inaccurate to put "South Kirby," when technically, it's not. Because two neighborhood associations coexist within one particular Roseville neighborhood.
To be honest, I don't have an answer for you. That's something we really have to think about, and hadn't considered that.
I have a couple of questions, Brian. How many neighborhood associations are there in Roseville? Does anyone know?
Seventeen? Thirty?
Thirty. And how many, I mean, I would just assume, handful, half, aren't active, or?
I think it's more than half are active, is that correct?
I tell you that 16 neighborhoods are active. There's eight more neighborhoods.
Do you want to come to the podium just for a second, real quick? Because I know, I know you know Arcona inside now, but, so there's around 30 neighborhood associations, and 16 of those are active.
But only eight more can be active, because unfortunately, some of the neighborhood associations don't have homes or people. For example, one neighborhood association is the Galleria. That's a neighborhood association. One neighborhood association is Industrial West.
Got it.
We're never going to activate.
Okay, so out of the 30, 16 are active, but they're-
Eight more that can be active.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I mean, I agree that if we're going to do this, we have to be inclusive about all of that, and not just pick those that happen to be active today. Did you find during your research on this, did you find that there's confusion between neighborhoods and neighborhood associations? And I say that because I find it confusing. I think of most of the time, a neighborhood association is something that people would pay dues, and I think that's probably what most people would think, is that there's, you pay dues, there could or could not be a gate, but a neighborhood is different than that. So did that ever come up?
Not specifically. We were focused a lot on the older neighborhoods, which I think the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations are very singular. In some of the newer areas of town that have larger neighborhood associations, that may not be the case, there may be like sub-neighborhoods of the neighborhoods. So again, a lot of our consideration was how to do this in a manageable way, in a way that there was public input, but public input in a way that was consistent, and how we received the information and how we acted on it. It's not to say that this can't be expanded, it certainly can be, if that's your wish, but that was the idea going into it, is why we developed it this way.
Well, you know, I love the idea of the identification of neighborhoods, because I know there are a couple of us that were born and raised here, and so if everyone says, "Where do you live?" You know, it's always the neighborhood, or "Where did you grow up?" And so, for example, you know, I grew up in Sierra Gardens neighborhood, which I think is part of the Meadow Oaks. But I would never say that I grew up in Meadow Oaks. Or, you know, for example, now I live in Diamond Creek, but I would never say I live in Blue Oaks Neighborhood Association. So I think that there's some confusion there, because I know the idea is to, for us to create a program that we can wrap our arms around, but I also don't want to do something that's going to create more confusion around having that name association in there, or putting up signs that really people might not identify with too, that don't really resonate, and I think that's part of Councilmember Mendonza's questions too, you know, I mean, Kirby Ranch, just Kirby Ranch, or, you know, Crestmont, but I don't know if that matches to what the neighborhood association is called. I think that's all my questions for right now. And does council have any other questions? And then we'll open up to public comment.
One, and there's reference to aluminum, so what you're envisioning is all the signs would be aluminum?
Right. Like if you see the Neighborhood Watch signs that are currently around the city, is similar in size and construction of those.
You know, and what's now referred to as the Historic Sierra Vista Neighborhood Association, kind of seems out of character, right? I mean, it seems like, you know, Woodbridge Park in that area has a different feel. And this kind, also, my question really kind of goes to how you integrate these in with areas that have design standards already? So, and that's my question, and so I think we have a lot more questions than, anyway, that's, you know.
And Bruce, Mayor Haudershell, sorry.
Bruce is fine.
So one of the things we were trying to do with this program is to create something that is useful to our residents, and not have a large impact upon city resources and funding. So what we came up with was, we've got the neighborhood associations, the active associations to help us with talking to their residents, to getting consensus on the signs, what they're going to look like. And then they would come to us, and we could install them using our aluminum signs, because we can make them in-house for very inexpensive. We're talking, you know, a few thousand dollars a year is what we're expecting it to cost. If we go to where city staff has to start canvassing these neighborhoods that don't have active associations, it's going to become incumbent upon us to spend lots of staff time trying to figure out what we can put out there that'll make everyone happy. And if we have to go with special signs, wood signs, special shapes or whatever, then it's going to add to the costs that I don't think, oh, I know Public Works can't absorb without additional resources. So I just wanted to put that out there, that that's one of the reasons behind the active associations and the aluminum signs, which I, I know, there's a lot prettier signs you could put out there, they just cost money.
You know what I love about your professionalism? You have an aspirational goal of making everybody happy.
Are there any other comments from council? Okay, we'll open up to public comment. I know we've got a few cards here, so we'll start with our cards first, and then anyone that didn't fill out a yellow card can do so and speak after.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have several cards. Our first speaker will be Mr. Kevin LaChance. Come on up. And again, there is a five-minute for this particular item.
Don't worry, I'll take less time than last time. Kevin LaChance, so I am current president of Arcona and vice president of Roseville Heights Neighborhood Association. And so just to give a little bit of, because I have heard some excellent questions, some of these were brought up internally from us to the city as we were discussing back and forth. And so first, I would say I'm very excited by the idea that we're going to get a lot of monument signs for our neighborhoods, because that was kind of the original idea, and then we were all come back, like, that's going to cost a lot of money. But what else can we do? And that's where the concept of these much smaller, more still good and beautiful, and if you look, you know, like, these were artistically designed and came through the cities, at least the ones that Primo were actually shown, or the ones that came, oh, but through the city's own, I believe, designer actually helped put those together. So they look really nice. For the rest of the associations, the smaller ones, we have, of the ones who have been active, probably about two-thirds of them actually have logos that they've done typically internally, sometimes they've hired somebody, they've paid somebody. So just to give some concept of what those look like. For the ones that have never been active, or haven't been active recently, a lot of them have no logos, there's no historic logo or identification for that neighborhood. So if we were to, like, move out and just say, let's put signs out everywhere based off of the neighborhoods, things to keep in mind would be, well, then the city's going to have to determine what that logo is, and you're going to have to have that go through design committee. You know, like, just in general, I can't speak for Arcona to this, because that hasn't been internally debated, but I don't think that would be a huge problem. Most of us just, we want a logo, we want it to look pretty. We want something to identify that neighborhood. And something to address, I believe, some of these concerns about the differences between a neighborhood and association. Just to give some thought towards that one is, like, I believe Tracy Mendoza did speak out in that, as a neighborhood or a development, I would say perhaps, maybe the specific plan gets filled with a development, that tends to be identified, because it has the monument signs as a neighborhood. And as that rolls out in pieces, usually the city and Arcona would activate the neighborhood, bring them up and live, and that's how that association would be small, and then another one, another smaller one might come into play, and another one. And those are just the means by which those community members can elect a board and then interface a little bit more with the city. Just as an explanation, a little bit about what Arcona is and the differences between neighborhood associations and what a neighborhood is. And in general, just a little bit of history too on this, is I think this came a little bit out of an old plan from more than 12-years-ish ago, previous group, previous leadership in Arcona, previous leader with the city. And the idea was, they wanted to have these signs to, again, just build community, build identification of these areas. And that eventually, that plan got shelved because of cost, you know, 2010, 2012, like, even a small cost was going to be a little bit too much for the city and Arcona to bear, so we shelved that. We actually came to the city and said, "Hey, we want some monument signs, some of the neighborhoods are willing to pay for these, but we need to know how to do that, how to make that actually happen." And so the city started thinking about what the process would be, how that's going to work. Then they came back, and we both dusted off this old idea, and we're like, "Hey, well, what if we do this smaller, more affordable, still really attractive idea?" And that's how we ended up coming up with the initial proposal we're looking at today. So just, any questions for me, or?
I think we're good. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Melinda Surmani.
Hi, I'm Melinda Surmani. I'm the president of the Cherry Glen Neighborhood Association. I've been president a couple of different times for Cherry Glen. I've lived in Cherry Glen neighborhood for 33 years. And the sign identifies us as one of the older historic neighborhoods. And when you say, "Oh, I live in Cherry Glen," people go, "What's Cherry Glen?" I mean, there's a whole history behind the cherry orchards that used to be in our area, and same goes for Los Cerritos at Roseville Heights and Sierra Vista. So it's a way for people to go, "Oh, you live in that part of Roseville." And I think, piggybacking on what Kevin said, you know, we went through a whole process to come up with that logo, with that logo and the sign. We put out notices to the residents, I probably have about two-thirds of the residents on an email, and said, "We're going to vote on a logo, we're going to have a meeting here." We put out a newsletter, la-la-la, we gave people plenty of opportunity to have input into the, into the logo. And so if we, if we move towards a non-active neighborhood, then I don't know how that works. So five people that are, you know, close to each other decide on what the logo is? So I think it's a way of, when non-active, we're not saying, "No, they're never going to have something," but it's like, yeah, here's a, here's a positive thing with getting together a board and make decisions for your neighborhood, bring your, bring your residents together, and, "Oh, by the way, we can do signs, and you guys can come up with the logo, and it fits with wherever they live and stuff." So it's more of a, you know, kind of a professional kind of way of coming up with it, rather than, you know, deciding over a cup of coffee what the logo's going to be for the neighborhood. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Next, we have James Kidd.
Thank you, folks.
Evening.
Mayor, council members, Jim Kidd from, I'm representing tonight the Maidu Neighborhood Association, which is in full support of this program. I had a nice speech, but I have so many questions I want to answer that you came up with. First of all, Bruce, I want to say, you talked about the core neighborhood associations, 99% of the core neighborhoods are active. So it's not like there's going to be inactive neighborhood associations in the core. Krista, you talked about the confusion between neighborhood associations and paying dues.
And neighborhoods.
Right. Well, but I'm, the dues thing is a homeowners' association. And Arcona, over the years, has been pounding into people that, "We're not a homeowners' association, we don't pay dues, we're all volunteers, we work with the city, we're great projects." So just to quickly answer those questions, and now I'll get into my speech. So as I said, I'm in support of this program. Arcona has been working on this program for probably 12 years, on and off, and I'm so glad we're at this point right now. All of the active neighborhood associations are in support of this program. Arcona neighborhood boundaries have only been acknowledged as maps. I think it's time to physically acknowledge the boundaries of our active neighborhood associations. And again, as Bruce said, this will reinforce the sense of identity and pride within each active neighborhood association. The uniform color and design will ensure that the signs are recognized as neighborhood associations. The major question, I think, tonight, and in talking about this, that has been asked is, why not inactive neighborhood associations? Well, I'm glad you asked that question. Three thoughts on that. First of all, in an active neighborhood association, this is one of the reasons why I've been pushing these sign programs, a new resident comes into Maidu Neighborhood Association, and they see the sign that says "Welcome to Maidu Neighborhood Association," they can Google "Maidu Neighborhood Association" and see our website, see our activities, see our meeting times, and come and join the neighborhood association. What does an inactive neighborhood association do when they Google Junction West, and they go and, there's nothing there? You know, they don't know what's going on, and that, that's why it's good for active neighborhood associations. And again, as Melinda talked about, each neighborhood association will design their own logo to be placed on the sign, and again, this is pride of neighborhood, of active neighborhood. So who will design the logo for inactive neighbors? Shouldn't it be the residents of that neighborhood association? So we have to get those eight neighborhoods active, and then they could create their sign and their logo. And then the other minor thing is, if it's only for active neighborhood associations, this is a small incentive to become active. But if the key vote on this is hindered by not including inactive neighborhood associations, I have no problem with including inactive neighborhood associations. We just have to solve the problem of who will create the logo? Will the city spend staff time and all to create the logo? And who will select the eight or nine sites throughout the inactive neighborhood to figure out where it should go? So those are my thoughts on that. I want to finally thank Brian Jacobson for helping, Megan McPherson, I have to say, because I don't remember the new last name, sorry, and Dominic Casey, who has helped with input in moving this project forward. That's about all I have. If you have any other questions, I could get up later to answer your questions, but I really think we could start the program with active neighborhood associations, because we have the boards, we have the volunteers to make it work, and, but, you know, if it's a deal breaker, because inactive neighborhood associations, I want this program passed. So if that's all we need to do to pass this program, then I'm for it. But I think we could start with active neighborhood associations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Ms. Ellen DeBach-Riley.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. I'm sure you all recognize me as that person from Historic Sierra Vista neighborhood. The reason I want to bring up our neighborhood specifically, and I am the president- The reason I want to bring up our neighborhood specifically, and I am the president of that neighborhood association, is we recently changed our name from Sierra Vista to Historic Sierra Vista, and I'm sure you remember, because there's another Sierra Vista on the other side of Roseville. So it was truly an identity issue, and it was our neighbors. I mean, our neighborhood association are the people who live in our neighborhood. It's not an organization that just reigns over them. Those are the people that came and voted for that name change. So this neighborhood sign, those beautiful signs that you all saw up there, give us an opportunity to have that identity. And even inactive neighbors, neighborhoods, would be the ones that choose what the name of that neighborhood is. They're the ones that would come with the application saying, our neighborhood is called Kirby Side, or Kirby Ranch, however they define that. So I don't see deciding what the neighborhood name will be as a problem. I see more the problem being, how do we organize that, and how do we get the voice of all of those people, so that they come to an agreement on what they want to call their neighborhood and what they want their sign to look like? At any rate, I think this is a fabulous idea. I would really love to see you adopt this policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no more speaker cards.
Okay. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address this item? Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for deliberations or more questions of staff.
I've got something I just want to bring before my fellow council here. So in listening to everybody's comments tonight, and Mayor Bernascony, you kind of touched off on what I was going to say during this time, but I want to bring to all of us up here an idea, and see if there's any willingness to get behind it. It's a minor change to what we're, what's proposed here tonight. I don't necessarily, I would like to explore the option of, maybe we don't have the word "association." I mean, some of the examples Krista, or Mayor Bernascony gave, pardon me, I've heard, you know, Cherry Glen, he came up, and Ellen, to your point with the historic versus the other Sierra Vista, that's, I guess, you wouldn't necessarily put "nonhistoric," but we'll just keep it Sierra Vista, to put neighborhood association behind it. I mean, we know there's an association behind it. We know that embedded within this fiber is Arcona, and there's an established board that, and all that goes with this, right? But I just kind of think, when you see Cherry Glen, for instance, what we have here before us tonight, or Blue Oaks, or Kirby Ranch, I mean, that's the identifier, that's the marker of that particular neighborhood, that particular group of people, who over, you know, in some cases, many, many decades, who have, you know, that neighborhood has come into its own identity, has either become historic, or have our newer neighborhoods, like, for instance, Blue Oaks Neighborhood Association, they like to go by Bona sometimes, but Blue Oaks, there is a distinction there, right? I mean, there, every development that we have in Roseville, going back, you know, several, I mean, going back generations, they're named that for a reason. I mean, you spoke tonight about the cherry orchards and the history behind Cherry Glen. I mean, I know the history behind Sierra Vista, Kirby Ranch, Johnson Ranch, I mean, all of them have a story, and I think if you just stop at the name, I think that that sign, when you see it, it's like, oh, you know, I'm entering, you know, Maidoo. And Maidoo has, I mean, you don't, that has a rich history. I mean, we were right next to the Maidoo.
Museum.
Museum, thank you, I said facility, I meant museum. So I mean, it's not like you lose any identity in the neighborhood by dropping the word "association" off of it, but I think that it actually makes it a more, just like, you know, attention-getting message, when you just focus on the neighborhood and name, or the marker, or identifier, whatever you want to call it, instead of adding "association" behind it. Because my fear is, what's an active association today, it could very well go dormant tomorrow. I mean, I had that happen in Kirby Ranch with several cycles, Jim, I know, we've worked over the years, you know, and they can go sometimes a year, then revive themselves, and they work great. I mean, I'm not saying that everyone's going to fail, but we do have that, there's always that likelihood, that one that's active today might not be active tomorrow. And then, what we were talking about a few moments ago, about the ones that aren't active, we wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't be so bad if they weren't active, if we didn't have the word "association" behind it, because someone wouldn't be Googling the association. You could still Google, you know, one of our inactive neighborhoods, and get a history lesson on what area of town that is in Roseville, why it may or may not be historic, why it was called that. I mean, you are going to get all of the same history lesson you would get without the word "association" behind it. And I would actually argue that, if it's an inactive association, and by looking at that and Googling it, and you might spark an interest to actually get that neighborhood association up and running. A lot of people in Roseville don't know a lot about the different areas. They get so, you know, mindset and head down on where they live, and what they do, and their same route back and forth to work and to school and whatever, but I think this as an opportunity, you know, on that level, the ones that are inactive, to maybe bring some new life to those, and maybe we do get, I think, Jim, you said, so it's 16 out of 30, we have active with an additional eight that could potentially come in, so that's 24 out of 30? That's not bad odds, right? So my suggestion to the council, I mean, to consider, is maybe, do we need to have the word "association" behind the actual name of the community? That's all I want to say.
Okay, let me ask you a question. What neighborhood do you live in?
I live in Maidoo now.
Okay. What neighborhood association are you a part of?
Maidoo.
Maidoo. What neighborhood do you live in?
I live in...
When people say, what neighborhood?
No, I, God, now it's...
Oh, Pauline.
My God.
You've been there forever.
Yeah. I've been in the, I've been in my neighborhood for...
Okay, I guess the question is, does your neighborhood and your neighborhood association name, do those align for you?
Not particularly. I know the people in the association.
But, I mean, do the names? So, like, for example, like, you know, I live in Diamond Creek, but I, you know, I think it's Blue Oaks Neighborhood Association.
Roseville Heights, okay, Roseville Heights.
Or, you know, Sierra Gardens.
I live in Summer Hill, I know where I live.
And what's your association name?
Reserve Specific Plan Neighborhood Association. But I live in Summer Hill.
So that's just, it's just a little bit of my concern, is that, I also don't like the association either, but then, I think it's the confusing between your neighborhood and your neighborhood association, and we want to do something that's useful, right? We want to do something that shows community, that signage, that doesn't confuse people, is my concern too. So that's why I just bring that up, about neighborhood versus your neighborhood association.
I can stop by leaving that off, it might actually be helpful.
Well, no, I agree with you, because I think, I think you have a wonderful idea about the history of Roseville. People have no idea what your name is, and especially like Cherry Glen, or even, you know, in our areas, and I think that provokes you to maybe, you know, Google, why was it ever called that? You know, that kind of thing, and more of a history of your community, your area of Roseville. And as far as the ones that aren't active, I would be just interested to see the area and the history of what was, what were they called before? I'm thinking, I'm just, right now, I'm thinking off of Kirby Way, a lot of those homes was made by a gentleman named, last name was Garcia, and they used to call it Garcia Track. And, you know, he made probably about 15 or 20 houses. That was big development in that period of time. And I don't know if they had, you know, if that was even a real name, you know, or just people called. I think that's, that's the history that we have. And then, people that are real fortunate, that have associations that are active, I think that's fine too. But I think, to keep the unity of all of Roseville, I think neighborhood says it to me. And then, association is the next step, even more community, but to have the signs up there, I'm still thinking of Historic Sierra Vista. I really appreciate you saying that, because, but when you talked to me about a year ago, it was like, gee, I don't know where to put the sign, or the bridge, or on the wall, or on the ceiling, but the concept of what you wanted was really good, and I appreciate you keep saying that, because, and now it's, you know, cost, or where do we put it, but we like that idea, but I want, it's the unity of all of Roseville, and I think association, I think neighborhood, like Cherry Glen, neighborhood does it.
Any other comments?
I want to comment on the association piece of it. First of all, you know, these are the neighborhood association representatives. They were organized by the city, our police department actually organized them many, many years ago, Arcona in general. The purpose of their meetings are, you know, at our neighborhood meetings, there's police there, there's fire, there's a lot of time city staff there, giving information out, listening to the neighbors complain about the people that run that stoplight out there, you know, trying to help in that community. And that very organized association has members that meet together in the whole city board of Arcona, and they, Arcona, have come to us asking for this. So this is our constituents asking for this. You know, you live, there's Crocker Ranch out in the Blue Oaks neighborhood, that's a Crocker Ranch neighborhood, but it's the Blue Oaks Neighborhood Association. And so I think if you just say, Blue Oaks neighborhood, it's going to be awkward, because this association is the organization that represents that whole community. They throw the big events, you know, they've, Blue Oaks has some of the best events around, and West Park and Fidament have some really large events as well. And so these neighborhood associations really are associations, and I think that's important to differentiate that. I have some other comments too, if I can veer off on other topics.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Let's see, hit some of this already. I think that if a neighborhood isn't set up with an association, and, first of all, I think we ought to let Arcona drive it. So if there's a neighborhood that maybe doesn't have an association yet, or they're kind of starting to form, or for some reason, if the Arcona Board made up of all the neighborhoods decides, hey, you know what, we want to identify this one neighborhood, even though they're not formed yet, let them bring that forward, and maybe pick that out for a reason. You know, South Kirby versus Kirby, that might be something you want to identify, both so people kind of understand, I don't know. But I'd say let them, instead of pushing on staff, just go, you know, put them everywhere, let the, let Arcona come and tell us what they'd like to do. If they want to put one in an inactive neighborhood for a good reason, you know, that's their choice. I'd rather let them just put it up, because it's, it's the organization that's helping our city with this communication process. And then again, I think Jim said something really important, that I think we, as a council, need to listen to. He said, all of the neighborhoods are behind this. So our neighborhood associations have come together and requested this. And I know they've been meeting with the city to get this figured out, and I respect that, and I, I'm very supportive of Arcona coming forward and requesting this. I thought it was pretty well thought out, and so that's kind of where I stand on it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, you know, I share the same respect and the same enjoyment for what the neighborhood associations do, whether it's movie in the park, whether it's the, you know, ensuring Santa gets around and does those things. And that really is, the neighborhood association is a galvanizing force, and they're formed around, and I'm glad you used, you know, the park in Blue Oaks, because that's, that's the center of these communities, is where kids play, where, you know, people gather, right? But there are neighborhoods, there are different neighborhoods, right? And so, great start, we're not there yet. We need, you know, so, when you, you, there was a sign that said Cherry Glen, but there's also Thiel's Manor, so why not Thiel's Manor? Right? Why is it just one and not the other? With respect to the concern about outreach to areas that may not have an active neighborhood association? Well, we've got plenty, and this is the parks example, we have plenty of great examples through our parks and rec, of outreach, when they're going to rehabilitate a park, and connecting with those neighborhoods, and those folks in that neighborhood, and bringing them together. So certainly you could do that, in my mind, in a way of having a unifying, all-encompassing, city-wide signage program, that, and Jim, I love the QR code, or whatever you're doing, so I guess, does that happen automatically with your vehicle? That, because I can't do that and drive at the same time, okay? The sign's up there. I'm not ready to move forward with this, I'm ready to continue the conversations about this. One thing I see missing from the sign is a unifying theme. And the unifying theme can be as simple as that rose that's in Arcona's letterhead. But to me, you're creating, now, this doesn't unify, because there's not an overarching theme, like our downtown specific plan area, which has signage, which has a unifying theme. So, and then, what are you going to do with Crocker Ranch? What are you going to do with, is it Wood Lake, Woodmore Lake out where your area is?
Yeah, I'm forgetting.
I mean, there's going to be, you know, how do you, how do you integrate that into Johnson Ranch?
Long Meadow, maybe it's one of them.
Yeah, Long Meadow. How do you integrate that into Johnson Ranch, which is in the, which is his own neighborhood association, but, which has a lot of homeowners' association, so a lot of that community is behind Gates, right? So how do you, you know, how do you, how do you do that? I have more questions, but I think this is a good start. I think the conversation just needs to continue, in my mind, and we're not, we're not there yet. So, but I appreciate the initiative taken, or the resumption of the initiative that began 12 years ago, so.
Any other comments? One thing I wanted to leave with too, is that I also feel like this is just early for us. I'm not comfortable with approving a plan yet, when I still have a lot of questions regarding the active or inactive, or using the word "association," or, you know, leaving some people out. You know, and the idea too, about a logo, and maybe you had all batted this around, but you know, signs all don't need logos. In fact, logos date themselves really quickly. I mean, professionally done logo lasts maybe five, maybe 10 years, the most part. So that also, you can put signs up with a similar typeface, or different font, colors, that, you know, something that is Roseville, but I don't think, you know, to say that we won't want to do something until something has a logo, you don't, not everything needs a logo. I think you can brand it without the artwork too. So I also feel that this just needs a little bit more research and refining before I'm comfortable taking a vote on it.
Mayor, I just had a thought, and I want to ask staff, as part of the further exploration. Sometimes when you're, you know, in the technology we have in our automobiles now, there's an announcement, you're changing state lines, or county lines, or, Bruce, you're going too fast, okay, slow down, right? Is there any way to incorporate technology, to get to Jim's very good idea, about creating, you know, that identity, without physically creating that identity? So when you come across the Crooked Bridge, and you drop down onto Sierra there, into that neighborhood association, you know, it tells you, welcome to the Sierra Vista Neighborhood Association. Historic, sorry. Historic Sierra Vista. Welcome to Sierra Vista Park, you know how I feel. The plot map on your title says Sierra Vista Park. It doesn't say Historic Sierra Vista.
I think you're just a little bit ahead of your time. It's something we're looking into, we're starting to investigate connected vehicle technology, infrastructure to vehicle, we have some pilot projects we're working on with pedestrian crossings. Yes, the future does hold a time when we can put RFID, or connected vehicle technology, into our signs to let you know, hey, you're entering this neighborhood, or you're coming up on this street. That's definitely coming, it's just maybe a few years out yet.
Damn it.
Any other comments from staff, or do you even want to suggest a motion, or?
Depends if you want a motion, or we feel good about that, or do we want to put it out for consideration?
I make a motion to move forward with a suggestion by our community to do the sign program.
So the motion, to be clear, is to adopt a resolution, Resolution Number 22035, which is approving the city's neighborhood identification, sign policy, and program, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Do I get a second on that? Do I get a second?
Okay, so the motion fails.
I'd like to make a follow-up motion.
You want to make a second motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we return this to staff to work with Arcona, to revise this Resolution 22-035, to include further clarification on the specific neighborhoods that were discussed, and the identifying markers of those particular neighborhoods, and have that brought back to council at a later date.
Second.
I'm sorry, for clarity purposes again, the motion is to include, and for clarity, a specific neighborhoods and, I do apologize.
The specific neighborhoods and the name designations.
And name designation.
Maybe Art, who's included?
Yes, actually, we could include that as well.
Do we need a motion on this, or can we just?
Direction.
You need a motion. Well, you could have it as a motion.
Yes, we'll take a motion on this, because the direction to staff to come back is essentially what the motion is.
Can I get a second on that motion that was placed on the floor to follow up? I'm going to go with second, Albert. Thank you. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor with the second. At this point, I'll do a roll call. Madam Mayor, if you're okay with that?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rukucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
And Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously?
Okay. Next up, we have item 8.1, Roseville Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding, Salary Schedule Update, and Budget Adjustment.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director for the city. Is it not on? Yep. Okay, so you can hear me, I'm sorry. So I'll start over again, and say good evening. I'm pleased to be here this evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director for the city. And I'm very pleased to bring forward a successor MOU, well, Memorandum of Understanding, for our Roseville Police Officers Association. And I'm going to just, for brevity, is for Memorandum of Understanding, I'll refer to that as MOU. And for the Roseville Police Officers Association, I'll refer to the association as RPOA. The prior MOU expired on December 31, 2021. The RPOA represents 134 of our sworn personnel in the police department. We started bargaining with RPOA on September 15 of 2021. And the membership ratified the city's last, best, and final offer on January 27, 2022. So I'm going to go give a little bit of information before I get into the major terms that we negotiated. I'd first like to thank the negotiating teams for the city, for their hard work during this bargaining process, and for being collaborative through the entire process. I'd like to thank our chief negotiator for the city, Tim Davis, who's with Burke, Williams, and Sorensen. And I'd also like to thank Jerry Camu, who served as the chief negotiator for RPOA, for working with us through that process. There were many complex issues that we had to discuss and talk through to reach these agreements within the authority granted by city council. And overall, it's the city's goal to remain competitive for recruitment of great talent, and to retain our experienced and skilled staff, as the cost of turnover for police officers is very high. While the staff report does go into more detail, I'll share the major elements of what was negotiated in the successor MOU. We are pleased to have reached agreement on a four-year term. For the first year, we negotiated a 3% general wage increase that will be effective on February 12 of this, of 2022. In year two and four of the MOU, a labor market study will be conducted to set salaries at the 55th percentile, instead of market median, to retain the highly engaged city team, and support recruitment of laterals, which means experienced police officers, sorry, and retain our trained officers, because that's extremely important. This has estimated the 55th percentile to be approximately about 1 to 1.5% on average, above the market median, to help the city retain these very competitively, competitive positions in our market area. These labor market adjustments will be presented to council prior to January 2023 and January 2025. In year three, a 2.5% wage increase will be provided in the first full pay period of the year. Moving on to the salary schedule B changes, in 2016, to give you a little history, the city established a second salary schedule B that increased the number of salary steps, and reduced the percentage between salary steps from 5% to 2.5%. In 2019, the city agreed to remove four lower steps of that salary range, reducing it from 13, to a 13-step range, sorry, down to nine steps for police officer. We only adjusted the police officer range. This agreement further revises salary schedule B by removing three salary steps on the police sergeant salary range, and using the current top step, we're creating 3% between the salary steps, to help us retain our experienced staff. For health benefits, the city sought to be more consistent with our market agencies by creating a tiered flex credit contribution, which means a different contribution amount for those in the employee-only level, those who have employee plus dependent, and the family-level contributions, because the premium costs are different. The city contribution at the employee-only level was reduced, and the family-level contribution moved to 80% of the premium costs, to reduce significant out-of-pocket costs for employees, and again, help us be competitive in our market area. So this well helped the city with recruitment and retention. And in year two, three, and four, we again are trying to keep the city's contribution at approximately 80% of the family-level premium costs. We also negotiated an increased shift differential for, on the graveyard, from 2.5% to 5% in order to retain staff on that important shift. And we added a 2.5% swing shift differential, again, for retention. The last major element was with holiday hours. Previously, staff were able to cash out up to 40 hours, and they will be able to cash out up to 110 hours, the full amount, without having to ask for time off first, and being denied for that time off. So this is an advantage for the unit, and it helps us keep staff working, so we don't have to pay overtime hours. So the known four-year compounded cost to, oh, let me step back. So getting to fiscal impact, the current fiscal year impact will be about $260,000 to the general fund. The four-year compounded cost for the negotiated MOU to the general fund is $4.7 million. The labor market adjustments for year two and four will be determined once we conduct those total compensation studies. And those we will bring back to council, again, as I said before, in the January of 2023, or prior to, and prior to January 2025, so that we can report to council what those wage increases will be. And again, that's setting salaries at the 55th percentile. A budget, a budget adjustment will be, is also attached to this item of $885,000 to fund the estimated current budget impact that is not already covered. And this is for the terms of this MOU and the recently negotiated agreements. So with that said, staff recommends that council adopt the resolution approving the Roseville Police Officers Association Successor Memorandum of Understanding, that council adopt an ordinance to approve the RPOA salary schedules, and then also approve an ordinance to adopt the attached budget adjustment. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Does council have any questions of Stacy?
No.
Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this item? A closed public comment? Bring it back, for their deliberation, or you have a motion?
Yeah, just kind of deliberation. And, you know, and you, you gave the highlights, and the real headline, kind of salary negotiation, and, and the agreement. And you touched on that there was other levels of compensation that you can get in there. So I don't want anyone to go away thinking that, you know, that that's it, that, that's the extent to which our rank-and-file women and men in the field are compensated. Because as you go through the agreement, there is, you know, compensation and, for certain certifications, for training, you know, and other things like that. So we do have a great deal of respect and appreciation for our law enforcement, you know, all of our public safety, you know, including our dog, you know, our animal control officers, okay? They serve a vital service. But, you know, you, you gave the headlines, right, and the things that are focused on, but, and there's a lot more in there, that provides us, ensures that we can retain and have longevity with our, our folks here in the city. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think it's very good that we had all the groups working together to come for this resolution. And, and it's a four-year contract. And I think it's, I'm happy that both sides could work together and come up with, with a good plan.
Yes, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is to adopt resolution number 22-040, approving a memorandum of understanding for sworn employees represented by the Roseville Police Officers Association, and hence authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville. Additionally, to adopt ordinance number 6455, amending ordinance number 6306, the salary ordinance for sworn employees represented by the Roseville Police Officers Association, as amended by appendix A, to be effective February 12, 2022, as an urgency measure. And lastly, adopt ordinance number 6456, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure, and nothing further.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have a motion on the floor with the second? At this time, I'll do roll call. Vice Mayor Haudashelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rukucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is five to zero. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll start with comments from staff. Does staff have anything for us this evening?
I don't have a report, but I would like to make an introduction, if that's okay.
Please.
So today with us, we have our brand-new electric director, Daniel Beans. Dan Bean comes to us from the city of Redding with decades of experience in municipal utilities. In addition to that, he is a professional engineer, so he has a technical background. But I will tell you, what stood out to me was his clear passion for public service. And I would like to welcome him as our newest department head, and we're very happy to have him. And I'm sure he's going to come up and say a couple of words.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. I'm beyond excited to be here. It's been quite a journey, working with Michelle over the last several years. She's bragged a lot about this place, the city, and this organization. And day eight, she did not oversell it. It's, it's amazing. So, anyway, I'm super happy to be here. Lynn's going to be reaching out to you to set up some time, so you can come and talk to me, and get to know me more personally. But yeah, this, Roseville is just a great example of public power, how valuable it is for a municipal city to have access to that. It's such an economic driver. And, you know, what I learned in Redding is, what you do with a publicly-owned, customer-owned utility, is you get to align its operations and its values with the community values. And over 100 years, that really adds up to, just, it's immeasurable. So, anyway, I can tell you more about my background, or whatever you'd like to know, or we can do that one-on-one, whatever, since it's a public forum. But, or you can ask me questions, I'll take any questions. But, super excited to be here. Thank you.
We're glad you're here. Welcome.
Welcome to Roseville.
Thank you.
Great to have you.
Oh, I thought Carmen was announced at the last meeting, when I was, I wasn't here. So I, I would like to announce our new city clerk also. Carmen Avalos comes from Southern California, where she was both an elected city clerk, and also staff city clerk. So she's, understands both sides of the aisle, also brings decades of experience and education. And I should, too, both department heads came from a very competitive recruitment process, where we had internal candidates, and candidates from the outside, that were highly competitive. And so I would like to welcome Carmen as well. And I'm, I'm remiss, and I apologize for not, I thought that happened. I'll have to talk to Deanna about that tomorrow.
Well, she was here, but she didn't get to be right next to us, so.
So just very, very excited to be here, very happy to be able to support all of you, as you conduct the people's business. But more importantly, want to shout out to my kids who are watching. They always say, Mom, you always have meetings, what's so special about meetings? Especially the special meetings. But very happy to be here. It has definitely been a journey to get to this place. Very excited. And, you know, I echo those sentiments and comments made by Dan tonight. Very much what people brag about Roseville. Very friendly, very giving community, and I'm very excited to be part of the Roseville family. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
Good. You're welcome. We're glad you're here. Councilmember Rukucci, do you want to start us off with any comments?
Sure. I was just going to mention a couple of things about water. One, that we had two items on our, on our council consent on water. We had one on working with the Regional Water Authority on emergency preparedness for water plans. And so that in, in any kind of, I wouldn't say catastrophe, but if there's any problems, or ways that we could work together, we're looking to be more centered and work together. There's like 12 groups getting together. Also, another item that was on council consent is, here in Roseville, we get our water from the Folsom Reservoir. And there's one main pipe that's been there since 1952. And they're redoing that pipe, and it's going to have another pipe, and making sure that we're be able to get our water, and where, where the water line is, and where the pumping mechanisms are. So that'll be state-of-the-art. And it's not just for Roseville, it's Roseville, San Juan, Folsom, and actually, Folsom Prison. And they use, get that water from that line. So that's going to be another one that's going to be added on. And on top of that, I and two other council members, we had the opportunities to see the new water tanks that are being built here in West Roseville, so that we'll have water storage. And you can't miss it, it's real close to Wood Creek High School. They're, they're all cement, they're about 40-foot tall, and they're should be in working order in about May. And it just gives us added storage that we can put the water in there, and be serviced, West Roseville, at times that we need. It just gives us more opportunities of moving our water to areas that we need in Roseville. So we had three water issues that came up.
I don't have any additional reports. I just want to comment on what Councilwoman Rukucci said. I want to thank Sean Bigley and the city staff that allowed us to take that tour of the tanks. It was extremely informative. And I, I can't speak for the other two council members, but I learned a lot, and things I didn't know. And I just, I'm just very thankful that the city staff made that, made that happen, and accommodated us. You know, I know that there's a lot going on, and they had to actually stop some of the progress for us to, to look and take the tour. So I really appreciate that, and just want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haudashelt?
Yeah, so keeping on the consent calendar theme, I'm the representative to the Capitol Quarter Joint Powers Authority. We met earlier today on consent, where two important things related to the Third Track Project. On the city council's consent this evening was, what was it, related to Junction Crossing, which has broken ground over off of, over in historic Old Town. And then, also, on this evening's agenda, keeping in the transportation theme, we're actually, last week, Councilwoman Rukucci and I participated with our new Roseville Electric Director in, at the California Municipal Utilities Association. Probably old, old ground for him to walk around in, but we had meetings with Senator Leslie, and then Assembly Member Kylie. And, you know, one of the things that was there, we had our electric and environmental utilities talking about a legislative platform. But one thing to bring in full circle, is on tonight's consent agenda, was approval of plans and specifications for zero emissions bus depot projects. So we're trying to get to carbon neutral before we break the bank, you know. But we are very, taking the initiative to, you know, try to get zero emissions. And today is day, what is today, the 16th? So today is day 47 of 2022, without precip, with, without significant rain. And it's beyond scary, folks. This is worse than last year. So do So, do what you can. Shower with a friend.
There you go. See? I said that.
Councilmember Albert, you've got to follow that up, please, fast.
All right. Last week, I had the privilege of spending the morning over at Roseville High School in Ms. Dana Davenport's class, and I know we've got a couple of her students here tonight. It was a lot of fun, and it was nice talking with you. You guys have excellent questions. I'm going to add to the wastewater treatment plant freshwater tank lore. It was great. And one other tidbit, each of those 6-million-gallon water tanks are now wrapped with 40 miles of high-tension cable to make it extremely strong. There's a lot of pressure from the outside in the top, and it's very seismic-proof. And just kind of exciting to know we got that in the city. It was a lot of fun to watch. And I know the neighbors were really excited as well because they keep watching it go up, so... I serve in the Air Pollution Control District. We had a meeting last week, nothing real significant. The district's doing its thing right now, and I know we've got some really nice grants out of it for some of the items, our charge station and things, so we appreciate them supporting that. I serve on the Placer County Economic Development Board, and we're starting our BRE program, and that's Business Retention and Expansion Program. And our city of Roseville does that, too, with just Roseville businesses. And what we do is we go out and we connect with a business, and we talk to them and make sure they know we're here, ask what's going great, what's not going so great, and a series of questions so we can really get to understand the needs. And so, this morning, I was on a real interesting call with Kokiva, which is a high-tech business here in Roseville. And I thought it was kind of neat, a couple of things they really liked about Roseville because they chose to move here. Not only do we have super-cheap and very reliable power, but we have... It's an excellent place to live. People enjoy... Their workers enjoy being here, and it's very safe. And the CEO said that several times. It's really safe, and it's just such a nice place to live, and it's much more affordable than the Bay Area. And I know their company and many other companies are looking for entry-level engineers, and so if you've got a technical inkling, look them up. There's a lot of... There's several businesses along our foothill corridor that are going to be looking for engineers and including entry-levels, so I thought I'd throw that out there. And that's Kokiva with a C. And then last thing is, there was a... Last night, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council held an event for Aggie Square, and you've probably heard about it. If not, you're going to hear about it. And I'll just briefly mention, Aggie Square is a real interesting project that brings a lot of medical technology, a lot of... The bottom line is it brings $6 billion, $5 billion a year, $5 billion a year to our economy in the six-county region around Sacramento. And so, that was pretty significant and kind of exciting. And that economic development is what funds our police and our fire and helps us with roads and parks and all the great things that we enjoy, so I thought I'd mention that.
Excellent. All right. Well, I don't have much to add tonight, other than the rest of the committee work that were taking place tomorrow. I have SECOG. It seems like every day is very full. Our city manager and I will meet tomorrow morning at the Roseville Leadership Class, and they will hear from both of us, just about city government. In fact, they changed the meeting location. We're going to be here tomorrow morning, 8:00 a.m., so... Which is always a good class to be able to speak with. So, on that note, I will adjourn us.
Oh, Madam Mayor, you've got to open up the second public comment.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I should know this by now. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda? It's our second public comment.
Is there extra credit for the high school students?
Okay, I'll close public comment. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, and I will move or will have a motion to adjourn us to our March 2 meeting.
So, move.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
You have a "I"?
Favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, I want to stay.
It was...